And in addition to our normal pledge of allegiance, after the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have a moment of silence for four employees during our past year who have passed away, and I will read their names: Michael Harris, Correctional Officer, Mary Lapel, Deputy Sheriff, James Zwieb, County Commissioner, and Kim Schoenhardt, Administrative Secretary. So after the pledge, if you'd remain silent for a few seconds, thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are next. Commissioner Bender on the side there, and if you need a listening device, Carol will help you this morning. This morning, to start the meeting, we're going to recognize employees who are honored by the South Dakota Association of Counties. All of these individuals have been here 25, 30, or even 35 years. So if they would come forward when I read their name, I'll try to stand and do this, or I could go up front, but I don't think you'll hear me, which might be all right, too. We'll start with the 25-year employees. Is Rebecca McChesney here? Paul Nederich House? This is going to be a short discussion. Melanie Sanner? I'm over three. Karen Wager? Gee. And Gary Murray, I didn't see him. He's retired, so I wouldn't have expected him. Ah, now we got Bill Hoskins. Bill's been with the county for 30 years. Bill?
He's with the museum, but he's not a fossil.
I'll have you just stand up front for a while, so they can take your picture, too, maybe. Larry Bachan, Minnehaha County Appraiser. Don Hanson, I know he's retired, he was with the senior trial attorneys. Deborah Dos? How does it feel like to be alone up here? And Daniel Grapevine, County, there you go. Daniel's been with the organization 35 years. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
And Ramona Helseth. Kyle, you want to fill in for her? Ramona's been with the county for 40 years.
Top pay at last.
Yes.
She's been with the county for 46.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. We also have one award. You can go sit down if you'd like, and this is presented by the, it's the Loss Control Safety Achievement Award. It's presented to the employees of Minnehaha County by the Safety Benefits, Inc., on behalf of the South Dakota Municipal League Work Comp Fund, and SDPAA, which I keep forgetting what that acronym stands for. But they receive the gold level, so Doug, I saw you coming. Congratulations, Doug, on behalf of the county. We'll start with routine business. We'll consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Some move.
Second. A motion and a second. Any changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes four to zero one, absent. Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of September 22nd. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Your motion is your second. Motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have bills to be paid today of $1,055,507.87. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Reports, the personnel actions. We have a motion to consider to approve the routine personnel actions.
Some move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve those. Any questions, comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. No applications for abatement. No notices and requests. There's no planning and zoning notices. Commissioner Barth, petition for compromise of lien. I believe there's two of those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first one is DPNO 77143 for $5,426 and a cent. The applicant is asking for a compromise and release in full upon payment of $1,000. The applicant is, and her fiance are attempting to purchase a home, and this lien was identified during the title work. The closing is scheduled for October 16th, so as often is the case, it's not tomorrow. The lien originated in 2011 in assistance for medical expenses. The applicant has received no additional assistance and has consistently made payments of $35 a month or so since the lien was incurred. If the commission approves the compromise as requested, the applicant will have repaid 38% of the original lien balance. They list assets of just under $4,000, a leased vehicle, and a gross income of $35,000. They had a tax refund of just under $5,000. So they are hoping to clear this up before they need to close on their home, and the applicant is present and can speak on this issue if they choose to, without leaving their spot, without identifying themselves. They can speak right from where they're at and tell us anything they want and maybe answer a question.
Good. Does the applicant want to make any comments? Or if not, they certainly do not have to do that, and as Commissioner Barth said, you do not have to come to the microphone. You can stay right where you're at, and you don't need to if you don't want Or we'll ask you questions, maybe. Is there any other comments or questions for Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chair, if I may, an additional payment of $1,873 would bring the total repayment to 50% on this. Not that that has to be our goal, but potentially, we've oftentimes been more friendly towards people paying 50% or more. I would also say that making regular payments speaks well in their favor also. But we have some time. Potentially, we could defer action until we have five commissioners, and we could make a counteroffer or something.
Do you, Commissioner?
Commissioner Barth, you're saying then if the, they were going to pay $1,000, if we paid $2,800, it would make 50% on the total payments? Is that what?
Is that correct, or is it 1,800? It's just 1,873, so.
Total?
Total. So if they would.
Instead of $1,000, it'd be 1,873?
1,873, right.
Okay. Should make that motion. I'll second it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to make the settlement 50%, so the total would be 1,873, correct?
Yep.
Does the petitioner or applicant have any comments about that? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I don't necessarily agree with 50% all the time, but I think that's been our precedent in the past, and I think that would be the right thing to do here. I believe this was a medical deal, wasn't it? So obviously, there was a sudden unseen expense there, and so I just believe the 1,800 to bring it, was it 1,800 even? I can't.
1,873.
1,873 would bring it to the 50%, which I think would be the old past practices.
Any other questions or comments? I believe we should take a roll call vote. Cindy, do you want to do that, please?
Mr. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kelly?
Yeah, aye.
Got to go.
Aye. Motion unanimously passes. The settlement would be made for $1,873, and then the lien would be removed from the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth, you want to talk about the next DPNO?
Sure. And I think, if I may, the applicants should probably go to the commission office right away to work on that.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you after the meeting.
After the meeting, okay. Okay, this next lien is in the amount of, I'm sorry, DPNO 12415 for $900. This is in the name of both the applicant and her ex-husband. The applicant is requesting compromise and release in full with no payment, as applies to her, with the full amount remaining solely on her ex-husband. Basically, in this case, the expenses were on the ex-husband after the divorce, and the office has confirmed that. And so I think this is pretty simple. I'll make a motion to release it from the applicant, leaving it on the expouse.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to remove it from the applicant's file and place it on the expouse's file, if you will. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We now are at an opportunity for public comment. If there's anything that's not on the agenda, if you would like to make comments, we certainly would like to hear from you now. Is there anybody that would like to make comments about something that's not on the agenda? And you do need to identify yourself.
Commissioners, I'm Dr. David Bean. I have my wife June Bean, who is with me today, and I wish to comment about a speed trap, as I call it, on Six Mile Road. I live on 1609 North Six Mile Road, which is 4/10 of a mile north of Madison and 6/10 of a mile south of Maple Street. And I have for you a letter, but I'm not going to read it to you. And I have a handout that illustrates the particular problem that I'm concerned about. The reason I'm here today is that last Thursday, I drove into Brandon on North Six Mile Road, mailed a couple of letters, came back at about 2:30 in the afternoon, and was traveling along at the supposed mileage of 45 miles an hour, and I came up to what I call Hill Two, which is just before my house on the downside of that hill. And I reduced my speed down to 35 because I got 500 feet from the top of the hill to the blind entrance into my house. And as I'm going down the hill, I hear some noise behind me, and I look in the rearview mirror, and there is a, there are two cars that are coming at high rate of speed over this hilltop area. We call it the local ski jump hill. And they came down on me, so that I could see in my rearview mirror the face of one of the drivers, who had pulled in ahead of the next of the driver, and both of them fortunately pulled off into the no passing zone on the south side, and I did not get driven into the ditch in my entrance area. I was a little bit apprehensive about that, and I called the commissioner's office, and Carol was very kind and suggested that I discuss this with Mr. Barth. I did call Mr. Barth, and he and his wife came out Saturday, this past Saturday, to look at that particular area. And they agreed that this was a dangerous area, at least for my family and me getting in and out of that particular blind entrance. Now, this is not new, because back in January or December 13 or 14, I asked that somebody come out and take a look at this area, and you have a report by Shannon Schultz, the senior project engineer, who did a speed study. And that's a posted 45 mile an hour speed from Ames down to Madison Avenue. And the average, 85% of the people who went over that road in front of my door were going at 10 miles at least above the speed limit. 45 was the speed limit. They were averaging 55 miles an hour. A couple, three years ago, my spinal stenosis got to be a little more than, and I could stand, and so I was limping across the highway to pick up my mail. It takes me seven seconds to go across the highway. I noticed a car from the north, and five seconds from the top that I could see them, they were across my driveway. So if I was halfway across, I had then two seconds to get across the other half of my street before I got hit by that particular car. What prompted this was the thing that happened last Thursday, when I almost got run off the road by two cars in succession and into my particular driveway. So I'm very concerned about that. What happens is, we have about five seconds when we start to enter there to look up to the north and to see if there's no car. If there's no car, we've got five seconds till the car above there that we haven't yet seen crosses our entranceway. And what happens is, for us to get up to 45 miles an hour, we have to really step on the gas coming out of our area to get up to 45 miles an hour to keep ahead of the traffic that is now going at 55 miles an hour as they come across the top of that particular hill. I do have a handout, which gives you a front piece of the report, but also, could we just show this one right there? What you see there is Six Mile Road down to Madison from Rice Street. And the Rice Street area is two and a half miles, and that's all 45 mile. And that last half mile is the top of the hill that the people come over at 55 miles an hour to see whether they can catch me and my wife and my son driving out of our entranceway. What I'm suggesting is that from Maple Street south, that's a one mile distance, we reduce the speed limit from 45 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour, because just a half a mile before Maple Street is a hill, and the cars have come up over the hill from the north, and they go down that next hill, and they hit the bottom at about a tenth of a mile south of Maple Street. And then they start accelerating up the next hill, which is the hill number two, as I call it, the ski jump hill. And then they come barreling over the top of that area. So I'll also point out that that two and a half miles from Rice Street down to Madison is 45 miles an hour. The two miles south of that, that encompasses Pine Lake Hills and the new school down there, is 35 miles up till about a half a mile before Highway 42. So there's two miles there that is 35 miles an hour. When people are coming off another two miles, at 45 miles an hour. Now, an additional problem is at about 560 feet north of Madison is another hill. That's hill number one in our particular area, and that is all downhill, and there is a stop sign at Madison at that time. And unfortunately, that hill gets icy, and people come sliding through that particular stop sign, and we had a four-car engine injury there about a year and a half ago. Now, the car that almost drove me into my ditch is not the first time that that has occurred. About 18 months ago, again, a car was coming over the top of my ski jump hill and ended up in my tree front because he was texting or not looking or whatever, but he hit a car coming up my hill and on both fenders, and ended up down in my tree line down there. So there are things that happen there. The second, excuse the picture from the sky, but you can see from Madison on the right-hand side up to Maple, up to the top of the ski jump hill, is our entranceway. And our entranceway is 565 feet below the top of that hill. 565 feet, averaging five seconds going at 565 meters. It seems to me that the cars are ripping across at about 60 miles an hour rather than 55 miles an hour, but at least we've tracked them at 85% or above 55 miles per hour. Now, it's further a problem because we've closed down Madison Street at Potter Horn Corner, and there is a lot of traffic coming from Ames Street with Merlin Roy's road crews, and then there's a large cement plant there that's in cement, down, cement trucks down Six Mile Road, and they're going out on the north end up at Highway 42 to take care of things. These are going over 45 miles an hour, too, and those great big trucks. You've seen these double, double trucks that are towing all kinds of brick and mortar and stuff going around. Well, they're using Six Mile Road as their main road past my house. Now, when I talked with Mr. Schultz, he suggested they had to come to the county commissioners. That was back in 2014. Well, I let it go. I let it go until the other day, when I got tired of being trapped in that particular area. And so I called Mr. Barth, and he kindly brought he and his wife out on Saturday, checked it over, said, "You got a real problem here." And so he invited me to attend this meeting today to tell you the particular problem. We have about 565 feet from the top of ski jump hill to my entrance that goes south. And we look up there and check it out. My wife checks the other side, so that if there's any car that comes shooting over the top, they can pass on the no passing side and not hit us as we go along. It takes quite a little bit of accelerated effort to get up to 45 miles an hour from a dead stop when you've got five seconds from the top of the hill until somebody's on your tail end. Unfortunately, the two skisters that were tailing me drove into the south lane, which is a no passing area, and confronted a line of traffic coming from the south at that particular time. There was no accident. I didn't end up in a ditch, and that's why I'm here today. So what I would request is that a 35 mile zone be taken from Maple Street down to Madison Street. And if that's too much for you, then you could actually take it from the bottom of the hill, which is about 2/10 of a mile less, and make it 35 mile zone. Now, 35 mile zone, people drive slower than 45 mile zone people, and I travel through south Six Mile Road at 35, which is the posted area, and there is not any car going past me at 35 miles an hour going past that particular housing area or the school. So that's my problem. We would appreciate your assistance. We thank you for the time to speak to you, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Dr. Bean.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bean. I did go out there, and I must admit, it made me nervous, pulling out of his driveway, not knowing if people were driving as fast as I might be driving. Driving out there down south by where Ernst Recking was, I found myself going faster and faster, faster than the speed limit, just by the nature of being on a country road. It appears to be, you know, and our speed limits, you know, are not those that are in town normally. Anyway, I was nervous pulling out, and, you know, I have some other thoughts about this, but I did talk to the sheriff and the highway department, and I see the highway superintendent is here as our representative of the sheriff's department, and I wonder if they might comment. And I guess specifically, I know on that speed study, maybe DJ can explain it to us a little more.
If I could just make one more comment. The, Mr. Schultz suggested that I call the sheriff's office, and I did call Captain Ockman of the sheriff's office after that contact, and he and I have been in contact at least 25 times since that time. When I tell him, they are doing it again, and they're still coming over, and it would be a boost to county income, I think, if they were there all the time. But I think that the sheriff's office ought to do something better than chase people off of my driveway. In case you don't know where my driveway is, there is one driveway on all of Six Mile Road that has two American flags at its entrance and two barrels of Petunias. And they're the only one there, and you can come by and see the area at your leisure, and I thank you for your time and your.
Could I ask Dr. Bean a question before DJ?
Yes, go ahead.
Are these, the cars that are going excessive, are, do you recognize them as the same cars all the time, or is it local area people, or is it?
Well, Six Mile Road has become a transit area from Brandon and people that have been working down at the Morrell plant, who live on the south side of east, South Dakota, or east Sioux Falls. Who they are, I don't know who they are. They go by. This morning, I listened to the cars going by at 6 o'clock in the morning, and they're going by faster than 35 miles an hour or 45 miles an hour.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
I'd just like to comment, but I've lived just east of Dr. Bean, and that, I've lived out there for almost 20 years. It's a rural area where people use that road to travel highway speeds for a long time, and it's become much more of a heavily traveled area with a school and with lots of people living out there. And, you know, it takes people a while to adjust, and if the sheriffs are going to start to, I'm going to have to make sure that my teenager knows that the sheriffs are out there, because my guess is that they might have been some Bender family cars traveling at excessive speeds on that road, because it's easy to do that, and you go up and over a hill. There's a lot of kids that travel that road to go in and out of school. So I do think that as, you know, it's just another indication of growth in the county and areas that need to be as things change, as more people are using that road. There has been a lot of highway construction out there, so the number of cars, I would imagine, the last month particularly, has been very noticeable to anybody who travels out on that area, because there's been a lot of, a lot of north-south traffic has been forced into that road lately because other highways are closed. So I appreciate the issue that they're dealing with. And I like to go fast on that road, because it's a, it is a good way to get, to get north, but it does need to be looked at again.
DJ, would you make some comments, please, about the study and maybe some possible solutions other than what we're doing now?
Absolutely. DJ Booth, the highway superintendent, and I took a little bit to review our traffic study that we had done in 2014. Can't see exactly what the date is. It looks like this was in January 2014 that our last traffic study was done on Six Mile Road, and that was right at a half mile north of Madison Street, so very close to Dr. Bean's house. And we did a three-day traffic study, which is a typical study for us, and I think all of you have a handout that shows. of you have a handout that shows... Every sheet basically looks like that. Carol, do you have?
Do you need to blow it up?
Well, no. I would like to have two copies. The traffic study basically shows an average eighty-fifth percentile speed of fifty-four miles per hour, and that eighty-fifth percentile speed is what engineers typically look at when they look at a traffic study, and what that tells us is that the majority of people are driving fifty-four miles per hour. There's a few that are driving slower than that, there are a few that are driving faster than that. There is about eleven hundred cars per day that are taking Six Mile Road, and we've had a number of accidents about a half-mile south of Dr. Bean's house at the intersection of Madison Street, and we've had some minor accidents along Six Mile Road over the last five years, which was our study period. As far as the speeds go, the speed data shows, for example, the first sheet of the speed database, which was the sixteenth of January, the speed limit is forty-five miles per hour. The number of vehicles driving less than forty-five miles per hour was about three hundred and ninety cars out of eleven hundred and eighty cars that day. And so, the rest of the cars that were driving down that road were above the speed limit, most of them within five miles per hour over the speed limit. There was five hundred and thirteen cars that drove forty-five to forty-nine miles per hour, and then there were about two hundred and sixty cars that drove in excess of fifty miles per hour down that roadway. And when we look at a speed limit study, we look at that eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is in this case fifty-four miles per hour. MUTCD gives us a very procedural method for evaluating speed limits, and it describes that we should set that speed limit first based off of the design speed of the roadway, which is in this case fifty-five miles per hour, and second, by the eighty-fifth percentile speed. It should be within five miles per hour of the eighty-fifth percentile speed, because that's what people are used to driving and feel comfortable driving. And as Commissioner Barth had commented, on the section south of there, I think he was driving fast because it was just natural to feel like that's the speed that you should be driving on that roadway. People naturally feel like they can drive fifty-five miles per hour on this roadway because that's its design speed. So, when you set the speed limit lower than that, they might not follow it very well, because naturally, they feel like they can drive faster than that. And so, with the eighty-fifth percentile speed of fifty-four, according to MUTCD, we should probably be setting that at either fifty or sixty. We could go down to forty-five and kind of stretch it a little bit, and that's what we did in this case because of some known issues. But then, when we go back and we do a speed study, we can tell that the speed limit really didn't change the driver's patterns and that they were still driving that fifty-four miles per hour, and so, the change in the speed limit didn't necessarily correct driver behavior, which traditionally, it doesn't. So, as, trying to describe a little bit about what the speed limit does to driver behavior and maybe what we can do to try to impact driver behavior, there's a number of traffic calming methods that we can try to implement. One of them is additional signage, and I want to read, right out of the MUTCD, what they say about signage, so you can understand where the engineering or the highway department comes from. "The use of warning signs shall be based on engineering study or engineering judgment. The use of warning signs should be kept to a minimum, as the unnecessary use of warning signs tends to breed disrespect for all signs. In situations where the condition or activity is seasonal or temporary, the warning sign should be removed or covered when the condition or activity does not exist." So, what that's telling us is, is try not to put up additional signs when you don't have to, and they tell us when we have to put up signs by using warrants, is what they're called, and there are no warrants for this type of sign that we're looking at, and so then, it all falls back to engineering judgment, which all throughout the MUTCD, it tells us to minimize signs. We could put up additional signage, like I said, if we wanted to put up thirty-five mile per hour signs more frequently out there, we could do that. There are already several forty-five mile per hour signs, I think that we have six maybe in that mile going each way, or that two-mile stretch from Rice Holly down to Madison Street, which is a pretty high frequency for speed limit signs. We can put LED flashers on some of those signs, or one of those signs maybe where we know we have an issue. We could put some rumble strips down. Rumble strips are highly unadvised for this application, but it is one of the recognized traffic calming methods. One of the things that is relatively new with the MUTCD, and they found success for a shorter period of time, for three-month, three-month time periods, you can see about a nine mile per hour reduction in speed. You can paint the pavement, paint the speed limit on the pavement, and I have a picture pulled up on the computer, if we can change the Elmo. I'll switch that over to the computer. And so, what the federal highway administration has begun to study is how some of these methods impact traffic, and this type of painting on a roadway will help, what they say, three months, you can have a nine mile per hour reduction in speed. And that would be really great in this case, because we are about ten miles per hour over the speed limit. The problem with this method is that, one, in the winter, it's not really going to work because the road will be covered in some sort of salt or sand or snow, and then, two, we would have to repaint it every single year in order to make it bright and stick out, otherwise, drivers aren't going to notice it as much. So, we could do additional signage, put some lights on some of the signage, or we could put some stripes or some paint marks on the roadway. One of the other things that we've talked about, and I would have to do some more research in the MUTCD, is see how this is allowed, if there were a flashing beacon on a pedestrian crossing warning sign that is activated by Dr. Bean when he's going to cross the road, that might, that might help. The state of Minnesota has done some research on deer crossing, where they actually have sensors installed on delineated posts, when a deer breaks that sensor barrier, then the lights start flashing, and so, you know that there are deer in the area. We could type, or try to do some sort of switch installed on a post for him to activate, that might help out a little bit. All in all, I think that if we do choose to keep the speed limit at forty-five, we probably need to somehow try to enforce it a little bit better. I know that our sheriff's office has done quite a bit of enforcement and put speed trailers and stuff like that out there, and that helps for a really short period of time, and then drivers go back to their natural driving patterns. I think that if we went from forty-five to thirty-five, we would only magnify those problems, and people aren't going to be driving thirty-five miles per hour on this road, just because they know that it's a highway out in the country, and they're going to want to drive
Questions for DJ? Commissioner?
DJ, is there any studies that show that the traffic indicator or the speed indicator signs, I know they have a lot of them in Minnesota, do they slow traffic down, or do they keep it more within the speed limit signs?
The research that FHWA has done on the speed limit signs that have an LED...
Yeah, flash.
Flashing of what your speed is, they, for a very, very short stretch on the roadway, like a quarter a mile or less, depending on what the speed limit is, will reduce the traffic speed, but beyond that, it has little or no impact.
Is this, how many homes are on that stretch? Do you have any idea from Madison to Maple, or from Madison to Rice, say?
I'm not sure.
There are not very many homes from Maple north to Rice, but we have two at the top of my ski jump hill, there's my house, it's next to me, and then there's Elston Road, which is a little pathway that goes in, there's seven houses up there, and there's four houses at the top.
I can't hear, I'm sorry, I can't hear you unless you're at the microphone.
There are no buildings going on out there, this is just the beginning.
Any other questions for DJ?
One question.
Certainly.
The study...
Come on, all the way to the microphone.
That's right. I just questioned the study that said that forty-five was a good study for that roadway. Does that include three hills and valleys and ski jumps? Does that include that? Because I'll tell you, when they come over at forty-five, it's too fast off of that hill, and when they come off at fifty-five, it's twice too fast, and when they come off at thirty-five, it's kind of fast, too.
Right.
What are you going to do when we die? Then what are you going to do?
One of the things, one of the things that we look at during an engineering speed study is the geometrics of the actual roadway, whether it's a horizontal realignment or vertical realignment, and so, those vertical realignments were looked at for stopping site distance. And so, that's another way that we were able to justify the forty-five miles per hour as opposed to fifty, when the eighty-fifth percentile was fifty-four miles per hour.
Deputy Sheriff Boyd, would you have any comments, please?
Thank you, Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. Obviously, Dr. Bean and his wife have some very valid concerns. Since the date of the study, we've been working with the highway department as well on that area. We get quite a number of complaints on Six Mile Road, and just since the study alone, we've performed four hundred and nineteen traffic stops out there, which is pretty significant for that stretch of area, considering we have eight hundred and ten square miles to cover in the county. Some of the things like DJ had stated, we've put a speed trailer out there that tends to slow down some of the people, like you're talking about, Commissioner Bender, that aren't really thinking about it, it's easy to travel faster, you're not intending to, but of course, we only have so many speed trailers, and today's Tuesday, and we have three special attention areas that have been brought to our attention already this week throughout the county. So, that's one of the struggles that we have, trying to keep up with calls of service, and very valid complaints that some of the citizens have as far as traffic. We're doing the best that we can, we have about five officers out at any given time, we do contract service, so it's very difficult. So, I think that some combination of some of the things that maybe DJ has suggested, along with continuing to do traffic enforcement the best we can in these areas that seem to be higher concern than others, is probably our only option at this point, unfortunately.
Any questions for the sheriff's department? My question would be, is there a higher density of tickets issued at certain times of the day? Like after school, before work, after work?
We obviously have officers that do the school zones. I haven't actually pulled that information to see, I could certainly get back to you, but we do have more enforcement in the school zones during that time, so I would venture to say yes, but I can't, I don't have those numbers for you at this time.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Preston Evans with the sheriff's department. The majority of our citations is going to be at night or in the school zones. In that location on Six Mile Road that Dr. Bean is talking about, just down to the south in the Fred Assam School Zone, every morning and every afternoon, there is a deputy there. The problem is, when that car is not visible, when we leave, then traffic goes back to its normal way it was before. The speed trailers, that's been pretty decent for us, we can set those out there. After a period of time, people get used to seeing those speed trailers, and then traffic goes back to its normal activity. On that road, that Six Mile Road, I can tell you, I drove it yesterday, I went by Dr. Bean's house, I seen the flags and the Petunias, it's pretty nice, by the way. On that, on that road, it's a very nice road, it's a paved road, it's out in the middle of the country, the growth in Minnehaha County is expanding, and it's a pretty, pretty nice road to drive. And what happens if you're coming off of Rice Street, or you're coming off of Madison, Madison is a fifty-five, or Rice Street's a fifty-five, and I'm going to just assume that people gets on there and think that, hey, this is a nice paved road, it's fifty-five miles an hour. It takes, you know, a couple of times to see the sign it, to realize that is forty-five. I can assure you that Dr. Bean's name has come up in our meetings quite a bit, we've been out there every month, that's been one of our high priority areas, is Six Mile Road. Unfortunately, as Michelle said, this morning, I've got three complaints for special attention. I'm running the county with five deputy sheriffs, we got eight hundred and ten square miles, and I'm trying to give everyone a little attention, and unfortunately, I'm not able to sit in Dr. Bean's driveway like I would love to, after sitting here and make sure his problem is taken care of, but I just can't, I just haven't so far, so.
Any questions for Preston, or Michelle, or DJ? Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
I do have two more comments, too, if that's all right?
Sure.
One of the things that we would like to do from the highway department, and I'm not very optimistic about it, to be honest, would just try to work with the post office to get the mailbox relocated to the other side. They're extremely hesitant to do that in most cases, and so, like I said, I'm not real optimistic about that, but I think that would solve a lot of the problems. And then, the second thing is, we just received delivery of two new message board trailers a couple of weeks ago, and they do have radar units on them, and they do have programming capability to do something that is new, and we're actually, we've received the first message boards in the country that do this. They flash your speed, and then, in the next screen, you program what different dollar amounts are for speeds, and it will flash what your ticket would be. And so, once we get that up and running and programmed correctly, that's just another tool that we'll be able to use and see if that helps.
Any other comments?
Can I make one more comment?
Certainly.
As concerned as I am about my Patrickville driveway, I'm also greatly concerned about the five hundred feet before we hit Madison Avenue, or Madison Street. There is a hill there, and if you're going forty-five miles an hour up and down, up and down, you have five hundred feet from the top of that hill before you go through the stop sign at Madison Street. And as I said in my letter, there, we've had a four-car accident down there about twelve months ago, or whatever it is, and fortunately, nobody was injured, but four cars were damaged. And if that is not sanded, and the sanding crew gets out there as soon as the sand, as soon as it's slippery out there, but you can still slide through on that sand, through that stop sign into Madison Street, and the cars are going fifty-five miles, or fifty miles an hour, or the east and west of the road.
Well, obviously, we're not going to solve this right now, but Dr. Bean, thank you for coming and the letter and your concern, and I think what I'd like to do is suggest that Jeff, since you've been out there and you've seen the circumstances, if you would spend some time with the highway department and the sheriff's department and include the beans in the conversation about maybe some possible solutions that you could bring back in the next week, ten days?
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, yes.
Okay. We'll be in touch, and if you don't hear from Jeff, call the Argus Leader, they'll tell. Any other public comments? If not, we'll go to item ten, which is to issue a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Minnehaha County. Amy Carter, good morning, Amy. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, definitely, thank you. Amy Carter with the Director of Children's Inn, and also, today, I'm representing the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council. So, I'll go ahead and read our proclamation here for October. Whereas, over four million women are victims of severe assault by their intimate partners annually in the United States, and nearly one in four women are likely to be abused by a partner in her lifetime. And whereas, children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas, in two thousand and fourteen, the Sioux Falls Police Department and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office responded to one thousand two hundred and sixty-six domestic assault calls. And whereas, in two thousand and thirteen, fifty percent of the murders in South Dakota were a result of domestic violence. And whereas, a dedicated group of citizens have... And whereas, a dedicated group of citizens have been fighting domestic violence together through the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council for thirty-three years. And whereas, wearing a purple ribbon during the month of October will demonstrate support for the victims of domestic violence. And whereas, the voices of victims offer us important insight into the personal pain and loss that victims endure, and are voices that deserve our attention, respect, and support. Now, therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to become actively involved to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. What you, as an organization, do is incredible. In fact, I don't know how you do it so well. And I wish, frankly, you were out of business, but what you've been able to accomplish is amazing, and thank you for your service to, not just Sioux Falls, but the whole region, so.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments for the Children's Inn, Amy's group?
I'll make a motion to, to issue the proclamation.
I'll second that, I do have a comment.
Please.
Well, just that, you know, we have so many organizations in our community that do important work that without them, we would have to have a county department do. And to me, that's a huge savings for all of us as a community. And I don't believe government is necessarily the best agent to take care of individuals. I think that non-governmental organizations sometimes have a, a more wise way of dealing with people. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just add one more thing, we have our annual Take Back the Night event, which many of you have attended, and that's next Thursday, October eighth, at the Old Courthouse Museum. And we have, we honor an advocate in action, we have our candlelight march, and then we also have a wonderful Survivor speaker, a nationally recognized speaker. Her name is Teri Gendusa-Nicoli. She survived her husband's assault and is lucky to be alive today, and she tells her story. So I would encourage anyone here to attend if they would like to. It's free, and you don't have, you can just show up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is, need a vote?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Proclamation.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, thank you again. Now, item number eleven. Consider a motion to approve professional services agreement of design services with Civil Design, Inc., for structure replacement fifty-one thirty-two thirty-one. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, again. DJ Boothby, again, from the Highway Department. This agreement is for the TSNL, or the Preliminary Engineering, for a bridge replacement just west of the city of Sioux Falls. I think it's maybe two or three miles west of Sioux Falls, and maybe a half of a mile north of Forty-first Street on a township road. Our 2014 traffic count on this roadway was sixty vehicles per day. The structure is currently posted, and is structurally deficient, so thirty-one-foot structure. And we, upon your approval, wish to hire CDI, or Civil Design, Inc., who has done a few of our bridges already, and, and get to, get to work on the preliminary engineering. This we're proposing to replace in 2016.
Any questions for DJ?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item eleven for CDI professional services agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item number twelve is to authorize the chairman to sign change order number one for a decrease in the amount of forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents to the contract with Pram Construction for Project MC twenty-five-one BR fourteen. DJ?
Commissioners, we finished this project earlier this year, and Pram Construction did a great job. The change order is a decrease to the contract on forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents. There are a few additions and subtractions from various field-measured quantities. The biggest thing is probably the liquidated damages. They finished thirty-three days late, so there's sixteen and a half thousand dollars of liquidated damages. So, the contract value goes from three hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents to two hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. We do need this approved to process the final pay application.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign that change order.
Second.
Is there a motion and a second to approve change order, change order number one to decrease the amount on the contract with Pram Construction? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen is a public hearing to consider an ordinance repealing the 2010 revised drainage ordinance of Minnehaha County, repealing the Minnehaha County Drainage Plan, and dissolving the Minnehaha County Drainage Board. Scott Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Scott Anderson, County Planning. Today's the advertised hearing date and time for consideration of an ordinance to repeal the 2010 drainage ordinance. I, I know there's a lot, there are a few people here in the audience that would also like to speak. So, in the past five years, there have been several counties in South Dakota that have repealed their drainage ordinances. There's been eight counties. Those counties include some rather large, well-populated counties like Brown, Clay, Brookings, Turner, Hamlin, Clark, Kingsbury, and Edmonds. So drainage work that comes to the county, or comes before the board, can either be denied or appealed to the Circuit Court. And when this happens, the county faces the burden of defending whatever action the Drainage Board has taken. And as we have seen, this can be rather costly to the county. With the dissolution of the Drainage Board, private landowners would work out their issues by themselves, or through a mediation board set up through the state. Or, and if that failed, then they still would have the option of taking their grievance to Circuit Court. As I indicated, just briefly, the South Dakota Legislature recently passed statutes approving the mediation of drainage disputes. With the dissolutionment of the drainage ordinance, the 2010 drainage ordinance, the county would be removed from this legal process, and, and the property owners would need to resolve the, their differences in a different manner. This does not require planning commission action, as it's an ordinance based, a freestanding ordinance, and not a planning commission ordinance. And then, if you so desire to repeal the, the ordinance, the drainage ordinance, the next item would be the consideration of a, a new drainage ordinance, which would require some notification requirements, and require the property owners or the tile installers to submit that information to the county, so we can keep track of that. The one thing that I would like to show you is a quick diagram here of... This is, this is the statistics in a graph form of the number of drainage permits that we have approved in the county for the last five years. You can see that in, we hit a peak in 2011 and twelve. Sorry. Yeah, 2011 and twelve. You can also look at the number that were denied. So, almost all of our drainage permits are approved. There are a few that were withdrawn. You can see the number of drainage permits that have gone to the Drainage Board for each year, as shown. And just to give you a little bit of a idea of where we are for this year's drainage permits, we've issued approximately twenty. And you may wonder why in 2012, we issued almost three hundred, and today, we've issued approximately twenty. That is all somewhat based on commodity prices, and it's also based on the amount of drainage tile that's put in. So, I mean, as you put more and more in, you're, you're taking out the areas that need that, so it's, it stands to reason that you're going to start issuing less over time as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. This is a pretty straightforward concept. If we repeal it, we'll replace it with another potential ordinance, and we will sort of put this into the private realm of landowners letting themselves work this out in a different method.
Commissioner Kelly?
Scott, the approved on the left-hand side there, those are the ones that came in, got a permit, and apparently, never came to the board. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a, there is a method. If, if you are able to obtain your downstream property owner's waivers, or if it's going into like a name stream, those we can handle administratively through our office. And those, that, that number, that three hundred, let's say that two seventy-five number in 2012, that represents the number of permits that we approved administratively in our office.
So, so all we're talking about, really, is over here on the right-hand side?
Yes.
Those, those what there was a problem with, and they had to come to the board?
That's correct.
Which are...
Very few.
Insignificant. But, but the fact remains, it's still there.
Still there.
For the citizens to have a vehicle.
And, and you can, if I could just interject one other thing, if you look at the number, if you look at the number of permits that the Drainage Board took action on, and then you compare that with the denied column, you only denied one, and I, and that was, I believe, in 2012. And that's basically, that, that figure shows that one little bump there in 2012. Otherwise, the Drainage Board has been typically approving drainage requests that have come to the Drainage Board. And those typically, and those drainage items typically are property owners that can't resolve their issues. They can't get downstream waivers. They can't get game fishing parks. If you recall, if you think back to a lot of the, a lot of the drainage work that we do, if it involves game fishing parks, they will not sign a downstream waiver. So we, we sometimes get those as well.
For me?
Certainly.
So, is that a reason for getting rid of the Drainage Board? I understand with game fishing parks and fishing wildlife, they won't sign anything. So, but, but there are cases where, where the residents have, within the, within the five hundred mile, or wherever, or five hundred feet, do have legitimate concerns. And at that point, that's when they come to the Drainage Board. If they're not happy with ours, they can go on to court with it. But is it a time issue? Are we concerned about spending too much time on this, or why are we trying to?
Well, I think it's a, it's a, it's maybe a combination of time, effort, and county resources.
But isn't that what we get paid for, is to do these things?
It's not only what we get paid for, it's the amount of time that the state's attorney office also spends on defending these cases, and the length that they tend to, or they potentially can, can extend into. I, I, I agree that...
I mean, that's why we have a civil division of the state's attorney's office, and...
That's correct.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Bender?
To put it a different way, the way I think about this issue in my mind is, it's really more of a cost-benefit analysis. I mean, how much benefit do we add to the process by becoming involved versus how much cost do taxpayers in the county bear from our participation in the process? And from what I've heard and what I understand, is that there's some feeling, that to me seems to be fairly legitimate, that we add very little value to the process going in. We don't, we're not hydrologists, we don't really necessarily have a technical understanding, particularly as commissioners, I know I don't, of how water flows and how this affects downstream. But that if we do put ourselves in the process, and we don't really add very much benefit to the parties involved, we take on liability and for sure get named in any lawsuit that probably would have happened whether we were involved or not, and then become financially responsible for defending a lawsuit that we really didn't necessarily need to be involved in, in the sense that we don't really have a dog in that fight. And in my mind, that's the issue that we're trying to address here, is weighing that cost versus the benefit that we provide to our constituents and to the taxpayers in Minnehaha County. And I, I mean, I'm open to having a process available if somebody can convince me that we add value in that process. And I, you know, I'm new, I'm the new kid on the block, so, you know, perhaps there's a lot I don't understand. But I have not been convinced that we add value to the process, particularly when you compare it to the liability that our taxpayers then get involved with by virtue of our, our being at the table.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner?
I would just comment, I, I think Dick and Gene both have brought up some good points. And while we don't have any numbers on it, I know anecdotally that several of the appeals were resolved without any adverse action towards anybody, where people actually came in with their arms folded like this and sat to the opposite ends of the room, and, you know, we would defer action for two weeks, they'd work it out, and everybody's happy, and they didn't even come back. So we did act, in a sense, as a mediator on, on numerous, and I don't have numbers, but I can remember several cases where even brothers farming adjacent land would be unable to get along and would wind up making a deal, under the current system. I'm interested in this mediation that the state is offering, but we'll talk about that in a minute.
Other comments for questions? This is a public hearing, and I know there's people here who have an interest in that. If you would, the proponents, if you will, if they would come to the microphone and identify themselves, I'd kind of like to limit your comments to five minutes, if possible, but we're not going to be real strict on that. And secondly, not to repeat the same things, because even being a slow learner, I get it after once. So if you wouldn't mind the proponents coming forth first, and then if there's opponents, we will address that in the second part. Are there any proponents who would like to speak about the drainage-related issues?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jay Gilbertson of the East Dakota Water Development District, and has been mentioned, the proposed changes would add Minnehaha to a list of counties that over the last half-dozen years or so have, have taken similar action and gotten out of the drainage permit business. The, the state code under which the permitting process is allowed is seriously flawed. The counties that got involved, for the most part, did so with the intent of trying to help, but their efforts were hamstrung by, by the flaws in the law. And in the end of the day, you're really not in a position, as has been noted, to do all the things that are necessary to issue, to back up a permit that gets issued. And so, until the state fixes what they broke, or didn't build correctly in the first place, I would certainly think the wisest thing for Minnehaha County to do would be to step back, as Brookings and Brown and Hamlin and Kingsbury and all the rest have done, and let the individual landowners work it out. That's going to happen anyway. And if at some point down the line, the Legislature sees fit to correct the problems of the drainage law, then you can step back in if you want to add value to the process. But in the meantime, you're simply opening yourself up to expense and legal issues and headaches down the lane, so. Anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you, Jay. Questions for Jay? Otherwise, anyone else like to speak for the change? Anyone opposed like to speak?
I'm Mike Seifer, two six four four three four and sixty-first Avenue. It was kind of interesting, Commissioner Barth and I were at a meeting last night, and afterwards we talked about this briefly. And of course, as soon as we mentioned it, the first guys that jumped up about it were two farmers.
Mike, could you talk a little clearer into the, to the microphone?
The first people who had jumped up about it were a couple of farmers, and the discussion of eliminating the Drainage Board. Well, to me, the first time I read about this, my first thought was, I've been very d... disappointed in our counties, as Jay had mentioned. One of them is kind of my home area, where to me, they're running from the problem. And unfortunately, the state has led the stampede away from the problem, and now they're finally coming back to it with this mediation process, which I guess is yet to be seen what exactly it is. But I was, I've always looked upon our county as a leader when it comes to these types of issues. And I think people need to have some type of a forum, whether it be, you know, our drainage board. It gives them an opportunity to present, to argue, instead of just throwing it all out and, and put them in a situation where it goes with the deepest pockets win. Because that's basically what it'll do. And that's not fair to anybody. As a taxpayer, I expect the county to have some vehicle available to protect my property. I have a land that's, I have gotten approved to do some drainage on. But I know the water off my land will end up in Gulf of Mexico someday. I mean, because it will actually follow a known drainage path. And I guess as I look at just throwing this out, I think one of your end results potentially could be, like I say, why don't you take, leave the current one where it is? And every process is flawed. It is. You know, our zoning, we have flaws, we have everything. I mean, so why not wait to see what this state mediation thing is? And maybe that is the end result of, we resolve zoning issues, and if you do not agree with the county, the option is the state mediation. That's a pretty simple thing. And yet, we still have a board in place for people to go to. And, and that's actually where you meet, it's just like zoning, you don't know who's opposed to something until you bring it up. And then you find out who actually is opposed to it and why. And I think that's what our mediation, our, our drainage board should do and continue to do. And that's a few comments I had regarding that. Because like I say, I always look upon our county as the leader, not a follower.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody have any questions for Mike? Anyone else have any comments that they'd like to make?
My name is Marky Shepherd. I live in Western Minnehaha County, central western. And I think we should keep this ordinance too. Most people I've talked to like the ordinance. It does do well. And as far as the county goes, any problems they've had, to the best of my knowledge, has been basically their own fault by making poor decisions. I mean, you can't just hand out permits irregardless of what the conditions are. You need to know, if there's a dispute, you need to know there, you know, why there's a dispute. You need to have somebody qualified to go out there and look this situation over and maybe come back and advise the drainage board on whether to vote yea or nay on that permit. And I think if you do that, you wouldn't be having the problems you're having. And I know that probably means paying a little more for a qualified individual, somebody with experience in hydrology and civil law. Because not everybody can get rid of the water. There are downstream landowners that can't get rid of the water. I'm one of them. So, I'm one of those lawsuits. I don't know who the other one is, but, and what it involves. But I, I think you should keep the ordinance. Because like the fellow before me said, you know, if you want to resolve differences, do you have to go to court to do that? That's expensive, I, I can tell you. And it's not over yet. So, that's my feeling.
Thanks, Mark. Any other comments? You guys are a lot quieter than I expected.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask Director Gilbertson another question.
Certainly.
Jay, you know, the state had this study on drainage stuff. Is it still ongoing, going? And where are we at with this mediation plan? I mean, do we have a mediator? What's the process to get to mediation?
Mr. Chairman, the, in, during the 2012 session, the legislature created a regional watershed advisory task force with a charge to try and look at, at ways to manage water resource issues at a watershed scale, potentially including drainage. Recognizing that the Big Sioux River's case, you know, there's, there's some space north of Dell Rapids, you know, north of the county line, and obviously Lincoln County to the south, and looking at the river as a whole, it maybe has advantages, including drainage matters. You know, getting it to the Lincoln County line is great for Minnehaha County and so forth. After three years of meetings and testimony and tours, they came up with two bills during last session. Senate Bill Two called for the creation of watershed-based entities, regional, no, river-based and natural resource districts with a variety of powers and authorities. That basically has been stripped down to the entities exist on paper only. There is another task force that's trying to figure out what they're going to do. I do not have necessarily high hopes for that. The other issue that came forward was, was an attempt at mediation and creating a mediation process under the Department of Agriculture. I will be honest, that wasn't something, I, I was interested in the Senate Bill Two part of the discussion, not the Senate Bill Three, the mediation section. But I do know that the Department of Agriculture is working towards some event to try and provide a mechanism for neighbors to work through on a voluntary basis without having to go to court. Court remains an option for that. But if you want to try and work it out with your neighbor, you can get ahold of the Department of Ag, and they will be able to provide some assistance. It's not much of an answer, Commissioner, but...
Kirsten, if you'd like to make comments.
If I may, I, I am aware that the Department of Agriculture at the state level has received some certification for their mediation program, I believe, in the last few weeks. So, as far as I know, that they're, they are taking those, those disputes on a voluntary basis. It's, it's all voluntary, that mediation program.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
My name is Chad Hofer. To my thinking, the county is just shirking their responsibility and putting all the responsibility on the, on the landowners. And mediation costs money also. And there was a comment made about game fishing parks. Don't want to go along with it, anything. You need to start thinking about your water supply. I read an article about cities in Minnesota spend millions of dollars every year to treat their water for phosphates and nitrates. And, you know, what feeds, what feeds a lot of the aquifers is the little sloughs and stuff like that. So, that needs to be put in the process. And there has to be, my thinking, an organization that controls that. Because private landowner to private landowner, I don't believe we'll get that job done. The county has planning and zoning, as the cities do, to control what is being built, what areas next to you. Now, if you lived in the country and a party next door put a big hog confinement right next to your property, I think you'd be kicking to, this isn't an odor, this is water that does cause a lot of problems, so.
Thank you, Chad. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I happen to know that the East Dakota Water District is doing a nitrate study on the Big Sioux River and that the, well, I wonder if Mr. Gilbertson would come up and just comment on where the nitrate issues appear on the Big Sioux River, because it does not appear to be caused by tile drainage at this point. At least, that's my interpretation of the study that's ongoing.
Got to set up front next time. It's easier. Mr. Chairman, the, as Commissioner Barth notes, we're in, in the process of evaluating nitrate concentrations in the Big Sioux River from its headwaters down to the mouth in Sioux City. We have not spent a tremendous amount of time trying to particularly identify sources per se, but certainly in agricultural drainage, particularly subsurface drainage, elevated nitrates are a very common occurrence. To date, we haven't seen any strong indications during 2015 that this is a particular problem in the area, but, but my board believes that it's better to start looking before the problem arrives and know what the baseline is before we do that. Excuse me. I've got a presentation on, on the results, or we'll have the, the project end results a little bit later on. I talked with Commissioner Barth about the possibility of maybe arranging some time in front of the commission later on this fall. We can walk, and walk you through folks, walk you folks through what we've done and what some of our results are. But at this point, nitrates are not a particular problem. In 2015, nitrates in the Big Sioux River were not a problem.
Okay. And thank you, Jay.
Just to expand on his comments, though, the worst two spots on the river were right below the Watertown water treatment facility and right below or downstream from Sioux Falls, not below farms. And, you know, there are some technologies coming forward that can help with farm nitrates to include bioreactors and, and other things. And the hope is to be more efficient with that stuff. But nitrates at this point, that's not to say anything about bacteria in the river, that's nitrates. Thank you, Jay.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Kelly? I don't know if she should come before or after a motion, but I'll make them now. I'm not a fan of big government, I'm not a fan of more government, but there is a function for government of which we are a part. Our job is not simply to pass a budget up here, but it's also to act as, as a place for the citizens to come and air their views, pro or con on things, or if there's disputes. Now, I don't claim to be, and I don't think any of us have any great knowledge of hydrology or anything else. I don't think the people elected us because of our expertise in that manner. But, you know, other than, other than the budget, we continually make decisions all year long. I don't think, nobody likes to say for or against someone. I mean, you don't, you don't like to vote against somebody. If, if somebody's going to put a drain tile in and somebody downstream close to them says, "That's going to flood my whole horse pasture," or whatever, you know, it's, it's a difficult decision, but I think it's what we're here for. It's what we ran. When we ran, we agreed to make these decisions, and, and an awful lot of times, half the room walks out mad at us and the other half is happy. So, it just comes with the territory, I think. I do believe that it is our function to, as Mike said, to, to be an arbitrator, not an arbitrator, but to, to be a place where they can come initially and settle a dispute. You saw the num, you saw the, the chart, the, the number of applications that are approved. They're approved simply because administratively, these people have met all the things, including downstream property owners' objections. And, and so I don't think that, I, I think that's good that we, one, we know where these drain tiles are, we know, two, that they're, they're meeting whatever rules we've set out, and number three, they, they've got the downstream property owners, they've followed all the rules. Those that come to us, and there are very many, but they are there, and that's what we, we sit here for as citizens. If the downstream person has an objection, remember that the, the drain field for one is a tap for another. So, you know, the old adage is whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting, kind of holds, still holds true today. But I, I, I'm reluctant to, to throw away the drainage board until at some point, maybe the state or the regional deal takes over this whole thing. But I think at this point, we still offer an opportunity for our citizens to come and say, "I have an objection to this, to this action." We can suggest, particularly with this arbitration, I think as a drainage board, I think we could suggest at that time, that this is an option for them that they ought to look into very seriously. We can also suggest that maybe they go back and talk about this and find somewhere to, to compromise both parties and the thing. But I'm, I'm reluctant to throw it, just take it away, and all of a sudden we've got to get lawyers involved and, or the arbitration, state arbitration, I don't know, I'm sure that's a $1,000 deal to get them. But either way, this is a, this is a way without imposing a lot of costs on our citizens to at least express their views and their objections to something. So, I, I'm not going to support dissolving this, the board at this time. I, I think, I, whether it's used or not, I think it's an important thing, tool out there that everybody has, and we have to meet our citizens' needs on both sides, both those that are trying to drain tile. And Lord knows, when, you know, when corn prices were up over five bucks, land was precious. And it'll come back, I hope, I think. It just, at this time, it, there's not as much push, but, but it'll come back again in time over the years, that, you know, land values that continue to go up. It gets more important, drain tiling is, is a effective way of, of clearing up your field and, and making somebody, you can drive your tractor across the whole field instead of having to go a half a mile out of your way to get across the other side of it. It, it makes productive land, and I guess that's, that's a little disjointed, but that's kind of where, where my feeling is on this thing.
Generally speaking, we would like a motion before we have an essay, if you will, on the person's feelings about this. But frankly, is there anybody else that would like to make comments before we have a motion to make it equal out? If not, is there a motion? I'll make a motion not to repeal the ordinance. And if I get a second, I'll...
To deny the ordinance?
To not repeal the ordinance, to leave it as is.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, and if I may, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
You know, I was thinking about the repeal process, but it does seem like there is no easy way to go forward with this mediator stuff at this point. And I honestly think that having a county commissioner come out and look at a drainage situation is better than some guy in a black robe looking at a sideline picture and making a decision. And I take sincerely the comments that, you know, have been made about our job is to help the community, not just pass a budget. And certainly, we, we don't make money on a lot of our operations. We're not making money on our drain insurance. But I, I do believe that the nebulous, uncertain process that would replace this with, you know, mediation slash nebulous, nothing, isn't sufficient for me to toss out the bathwater at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just follow-up on Jeff's, you know, this, this country is formed on the fact that you can appeal to another body. And in this process, initially, you appeal to the drainage board, which then if you're not pleased with that, you can go on to the circuit court, and if necessary, even on the Supreme Court. And, you know, ultimately, we've said that the state or the federal Supreme Courts are the guys that make the final decision on this thing. And that process is in place for, for a reason. And it's a due process, and I think it's important that we continue to, to have that.
Other comments? Commissioner Bender?
You know, I think that, that we have mandated responsibilities that the state has given us that require a lot of our resources and that we provide very valuable services to the people in the county. I still struggle with, this is not a mandated responsibility. It requires a lot of financial resources that could be directed... It requires a lot of financial resources that could be directed towards other areas that we're really struggling to meet responsibilities in law enforcement, in jails, and, you know, all the other issues that we get presented on a weekly basis here. There's lots and lots of issues in our county and very limited resources that have been provided to us to deal with those issues. And I recognize that it's helpful to have some place to go. Courts are also a place to go, and unfortunately, when we get involved in this, we get dragged to court along with that, and really, the legal financial burden shifts to the county to defend that action at that point. And it doesn't, the numbers on the chart don't indicate to me that we have really added very much value to this process at all. But I am sure there are situations, because I've seen even in a little bit of time I've been here, where people, you know, getting people to come to the table is generally nine-tenths of the battle, just to get them to take some time to visit and, you know, try to work it out. Having to come in public and talk about an issue sometimes forces you to be a little more reasonable than you might be otherwise. And so I do, you know, I do see that there is some value in that process, I just am really struggling with the cost-benefit analysis.
Thank you.
Is it too late for me to give you a short overview of the mediation board that was set up under Senate Bill 3? Because I could do that if you'd like, if you, because I know there was a, Commissioner Kelly had indicated that it could be thousands of dollars for this mediation board, and it is spelled out in that Senate Bill 3. What is...
Mr. Chair, I don't think the arbitration board, the mediation board, I mean, is really a part. I think everybody agrees it's a good thing, we are in the commission discussion.
Does anyone like to hear what Senate Bill 3 detail is about?
Okay.
Thank you.
I did have the information if you wanted it.
Thanks. Any other comments? Well, I will just tell you that, you know, I am somebody that's a strong proponent of local control. I get, it seems like we're always in discussions with state taking things over what they just want to take over versus what, frankly, I think belongs locally. The other issue is not just the funding issues and not just the budget, we do a lot of things that there's no cost benefit to, that you can identify in a black and white kind of financial statement. People want government close to them rather than in Pierre or Washington, D.C. So the other thing is, I'm not really sure I know exactly what the state is trying to accomplish here, other than maybe mandate every county to be the same and have control of that. At this point, they really don't have the process completed, and to me, that's a little scary, that's, as they say, kind of being half-pregnant. So I'm concerned about the fact, what could come down the road without seeing everything in a black and white proposal and ordinance, if you will. And I do feel strongly that local control's better than state or federal control. And for those reasons, right now, I think I would support the fact that we leave the current ordinance the way it is until we have something more concrete, if you will, to talk about. We're always going to have people that don't agree with us, and the ones who don't agree with us always think that we're wrong, even if we don't agree with that, but that's the process. So I think we will call for a vote, please, and I believe we need to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Commissioner Bender?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Bender?
Aye.
Motion unanimously passes four to zero.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just comment that...
Absolutely.
We'll always have this potential revision in our back pocket when the time comes.
Thank you. Item 14, Scott. This public hearing to consider ordinance MC 48-15, an ordinance to provide notice to downstream landowners of drainage projects and to provide for reporting of drainage projects to Minnehaha County.
Yes, this is, once again, Scott Anderson County Planning, and this is a public hearing on a potential ordinance which would have replaced the ordinance that you decided just to leave in place at this time. Based on the action that you just took, I don't believe that we will be, this, I don't believe this ordinance now is necessary because we are no longer replacing an ordinance that you just left in place. However, it is a public hearing, so it is, I would ask that you would see if anyone in the public would like to address you, and at this point, I guess staff's recommendation is that this ordinance be denied as ordinance 3810 does no longer need to be replaced.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone that'd like to make comments about the ordinance MC 48-15? Any comments?
Make a motion to deny MC 48-15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Any other comments? If not, I think we're going to have a vote without going through the independent piece. All those in favor of denying ordinance MC 48-15, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion unanimously passes four to zero. Item 15 is closing comments on a briefing on our Department of Legislative Audit for fiscal year 2014. Jeff Schaefer, good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, everyone. This briefing is on the fiscal and compliance audit we conducted for the year ended 2014. The audit is in its final form. I'd like to have you, if you all have supplied a copy of the management letter, and if we could refer to the second page, we'll get to that. Halfway down the page there, it's under items of deficiencies noted in term control, which are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which are included in the current schedule of auditing in the report. If you have any questions at all, we're going through this, I'd like to have you go ahead and ask. The first item on there is internal accounting controls over financial reporting for the year ended 2014 were inadequate, resulting in inaccurate information being presented to the users of the financial report. The item is further discussed as current auditing 2014-01 as disclosed in the auditor's comments section of this report. I'd like to have you refer to the attachment in this, the financial reporting errors comment.
We don't have the paper copy in front of us.
Oh, okay.
So what's the attachment?
It was called the financial reporting errors comment.
Yeah, that's the last page. Page five.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go through a lot of this and maybe paraphrase some of this as we go along, but if you have any questions. It says, internal accounting controls over financial reporting for the year ended 2014 were inaccurate, resulting in inaccurate information being presented to users of the financial report. Under the analysis portion of it there, it says, we noted the following significant errors in the county's annual financial report for the year ended December 31, 2014. I would point out that a lot of these adjustments were reclassification in nature. Under A there, statement in deposition, restricted for insurance purposes understated by $343,000, restricted for road and bridge purposes understated by $273,000, restricted for bond redemption purposes understated by $8.8 million, courthouse building purposes was overstated by $2.8 million, and other purposes was overstated by $6.6 million. And the last item there was unrestricted, was overstated by $47,000. A lot of this was reclassification, it was on the report but in the wrong spots, so we corrected it to the proper place. Under item B there, statement in deposition, tax receivable current was overstated by $525,000. That was all reclassified as delinquent taxes, there's no tax receivable current. Taxes, the statement in deposition, deferred inflows of resources unavailable revenue was overstated by $88,000. And the statement in deposition, noncurrent liabilities due in more than one year was overstated by $62,000. The statement in deposition, claims payable was understated by $247,000. There were other less significant items noted in the annual reports. We were able to correct material reporting errors and therefore have issued unmodified audit opinion on the financial statement contained in this report. We recommend the county strengthen internal controls over financial reporting. Is there any questions that you might have concerning what we've talked about so far?
Any questions for Jeff?
I'm just curious if you could explain a little bit more about these classification issues and why you think they occurred?
I don't know why they occurred, but most of the time, it's just, it was part of the equity, and it was for bond redemption purposes, might have been tax restricted for debt service, that might have been shown as unrestricted, and so we just moved it to the proper function, I guess, as far as why they occurred.
Part of the management's response was that there was a change, and I'm just curious if you could comment on that.
Yes, the response, it says that we changed the materiality from 13 to 14, from 5.5% to 2.5%. And what that means is, through our judgment and through our department, we decided that we would go with a 2.5% threshold as opposed to a 5%, which means that anything over a certain 2.5% number, we would have to adjust to get down to a, make a materially correct the financial statements. And we had it at 5% last year. But I don't think in this case it would have mattered, the dollar amount was still significant enough, it would have been an audit comment in either case.
Okay.
Other questions for Jeff?
Commissioner Barth?
Jeff, there's a comment earlier on there, page three, I think. The centrally assessed telephone outside tax of $88,000 was not billed to SDN in 2014. Additionally, the 2015 centrally assessed telephone outside tax was not billed. What's that about?
Are you back on the management letter?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get to that here just shortly, but let me just go through and read that one, and then we'll discuss that, okay? The centrally assessed telephone outside tax of $88,478,30 was not billed to SDN Communication in 2014. Additionally, there's, in 2015, the centrally assessed telephone outside was not billed. The county did build the centrally assessed outside tax after it was brought to the county's attention, and we recommend the county build a centrally assessed telephone outside tax in a timely manner. It was just supposedly billed in an added tax, and it was just omitted in 14, and it was just subsequently omitted again in 15. It has been billed, and I believe, from what I recall, the first half of both of those, SDN is making payments on both, has made both the first half payments on those.
Other questions for Jeff? Jeff, is there, when I glanced through this, I didn't go back and look at last, the prior year's audit, are there any issues that are consistent from that report to this report?
The only one that probably would be consistent is on the bottom of the page there, where we talk about the SDN tax increment. The TIF district, and it says here, the SDN tax increment agreement states that the TIF agreement is to continue for 15 years after the completion of the project date or until the public proven costs are recovered. The TIF project completion date and costs have not been certified with the county, and we recommend the TIF completion date and the project costs be certified with the county. And that is a restatement for, I think this is the third or fourth year.
Okay. Have you any suggestions on that process?
I, we just need to have someone from the individuals from SDN that needs to certify the costs as well as the completion date, that we need to know.
That also, that requirement's also part of the city's responsibility too, isn't it?
I don't believe so. I think it's just, Mr.?
If I may?
Go ahead.
I'm somewhat familiar with the TIF agreement in this case. It's an obligation under that agreement for SDN to provide that information to us, and despite being asked multiple times to do that, they have not. So that's where it's at. I mean, it's a deficiency in our report...
Right.
But it's dependent on acts of another, let's put it that way.
That's a good way of putting it.
Yeah, thank you.
There's nothing else that, but from my standpoint, we just, there's nothing else we can do with it, but, like I say, there was other, less significant items that we talked with the other individuals about, but at completion of this, we're going to issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is as good as it gets, so.
Still, in my own mind, I'm thinking that the city requires certification alsos, but I won't argue with you on that because that's a different venue.
Okay.
Any other comments, Jeff?
I don't have any unless you all have. Any questions?
Mr. Litz, do you have any comments about the audit response and deficiencies in the management letter, if you will?
Bob Litz from the auditor's office, no, I really don't have any comments unless you'd have any questions. We became aware of the change of status between the 5, 2.5% during the audit. Should we have, had we have known that, things would have been quite a bit different, and we intend to correct those deficiencies for next year.
Comments or questions with Bob? My only comment would be whether it's, and I know that all of us who go through audits regularly, make it, it's a significant amount of work, but, you know, we're entrusted, if you will, to make those discussions and journal entries so that, in fact, if it's 5% or 2.5%, we'd all like it to be 0%. And frankly, I think that's what the goal ought to be, is not worry about so much the percentage, but to make sure that everything that we process is correct. And I'm guessing that Jeff is available for conversation if, in fact, we need to get clarification, if you will, so I would encourage that to happen.
As a matter of fact, we do have a consulting session immediately after this commission meeting, so.
Good. Other comments? Anyone else like to make any suggestions? If not, I think we need to make, we have to have a motion to approve, correct, the audit?
It's accepted, I guess, that'd be fine.
You're comfortable with that?
That's...
I'm sorry, you're comfortable with that?
That'd be fine, yeah.
Okay. If you're comfortable, I guess we should be too. Item number 16, and thank you, Jeff, for your time and effort. Authorize the chairman to sign Minnehaha County per diem contract with the counties listed. Jeff Gromer?
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. I will be very brief. This is just an adjustment to the county housing rate, taking the rate from $81.20 to $92.27. There's 14 contracts, Marie has the copies of the contracts. The only other significant change is the change to Lincoln County. The previous contract guaranteed them beds, and they were billed on a quarterly basis. This contract does not guarantee Lincoln County beds. Everybody's charged at the same rate for the $92.27.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Warden Gromer?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So how many beds are we able to rent these days, and what's that doing to our budget?
Very, very few. And that's one of the situations with the contracts, that kind of makes them a moot point. I'm also including letters to the counties that says, here's the contracts, but I don't have any beds to rent you. So here's the rate, if our situation changes, here's the rate we'll be able to charge to rent beds. But currently, I have very, very few beds. Lincoln County, at the present time, has still guaranteed the 12 beds, and we will continue to accept Lincoln County inmates, I just can't guarantee them a set number of beds. I need the flexibility to be able to call the Lincoln County Sheriff and say, I need room, you need to get your people out of the Minnehaha County Jail. We have a few inmates here and there from some of these other counties, but not a significant number.
Commissioner Kelly?
Jeff, the Lincoln County guaranteed beds, do they pay us whether they're used or not?
Yes. And they're always used.
And, you know, as things continue on and we're full, all of a sudden, the arrest made at 69th and Louise is going to have to be transported to where?
I was very clear with the Lincoln County Sheriff, and I'll be very clear with you folks as well, I am not suggesting in any way that we stop accepting Lincoln County inmates.
No, but if you're full...
I can still accept them, I just need the ability to call the Lincoln County Sheriff and say, I'm full, you have to get these folks out of our jail.
So you would have this person in holding... So you would have this person in holding in the...
What it actually amounts to is, will accept them, and they'll be processed in, and they'll go to court. It's the people that are going to be staying for a lengthier period of time. I need to have that flexibility to call them and say, "Hey, I need the bed space, you're going to have to get these people housed somewhere else." It's not a situation where we're saying, "Sorry, Sioux Falls police officer, you arrested a guy south of the Minnehaha County line, you can't bring him here." That is not at all.
Okay, so this is going to apply more after the preliminary hearing?
Absolutely, after their initial appearance.
Or after the, whatever you call it.
And they're going to be housed on a bond or something to that extent. And honestly, if we have room, we'll continue to house.
Yeah.
It's just at this rate and with the flexibility to say, "Sorry, I don't have room anymore."
Commissioner Barth?
Warden Gromer, you know, clearly, we've yet to kick off on the plan to build a, expand a jail, much needed as it is. If you had the room, how many inmates would you be able to, what's the demand out there? How many counties, federal folks are there that, you know, is it 60, is it 160? Is it 200?
I, you know, I can't give you a firm number on that because I don't know exactly how many inmates Lincoln County is housing other places. I know that the sheriff in Lincoln County is starting to run into some problems with where he's going to house people. I know I've reached out to some of the surrounding counties that have jails, which, that's a fairly small number, as far as what our costs and bed space availability would be, when and if Minnehaha County has to start to rent beds from other agencies for inmates. And there's, there's not a lot of availability. The fed, federal government, the U.S. Marshals have had to find other agencies to house their prisoners with, so that's placing a pretty significant burden on the surrounding jail beds. Obviously, when we're looking at housing Minnehaha County, or Lincoln County, or any South Dakota prisoner, we can't go into Minnesota. So that eliminates one entire direction for us to go, but there's not a large number of jail beds available in the area.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what are we missing out on, on potential revenue if we, I mean, there's obviously the federal prisoners as well. You know, would we regularly be able to hold 100 outside prisoners? Or is the demand from the feds and from other counties significantly less than that? Because I've heard from other sheriffs that they're going in other directions too.
That other sheriffs are going in other directions?
Yeah, because they can't...
To give an exact number as to how many we would be able to house if we had those available bed spaces, I don't know. 50 or more is very reasonable. I would think 75 or better is probably a pretty good estimate. I don't know that we'd actually be at 100. Part of the problem is, is the cost as well. Some of the smaller jails around are able to house inmates at a cheaper rate than what we are. And the main cost driver in this recalculated housing rate is medical care. It's, we figured the rate on the same rate that we figured the federal government, and I shouldn't say we, the auditor's office did that for me, so I'll give them their credit, but it's figured on the same formula used to develop the federal bed rate, which we signed a federal agreement, and that's in place for another three to four years. I can't remember which year exactly that one expires. At which point in time we'll re-figure that one and re-figure all these, again, these are figured on almost a yearly basis. But those rates, in the three or four years I've been involved in the jail operations, they go up every year.
Other questions for the warden? If not, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the per diem contracts with the counties listed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Jeff. Any county commission liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? Yes, sir, ma'am.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Commissioned Administrative Officer. Just a couple of things to update you on. One, just to remind you that we are in the process with doing the RFP process with Barry Dunn, as we look at the county systems, and so we're excited about that. We will be doing, starting that process next month. You'll actually start seeing meetings happening and people coming in and doing that. And so we expect, as we talk about the audit process, that those things will continue to make life even more smoothly as we go through, as we go through those processes. And as we know, that doesn't happen overnight. So just to let you know also that we appreciate staff's time in getting ready for both the surplus sale and the tax deed sale. Happened last Saturday. The tax deed sale raised a total of $96,650 on five properties. We appreciate Rich, Darlene, and Cindy, who came in and ran that auction for the county, and the properties sold ranged from $150 to $53,000. So we had some significant bidding that took place, and all the entities, all the taxing entities appreciate getting those back on the tax rolls and getting taken care of.
I was going to thank Rich and Darlene for being here and doing that last weekend, but they left. But thank you for all your hard work and frankly, for doing those extra steps in their functions. And certainly, the $96,650 will help our budget-related issues, so.
That's the most I can remember.
Well, it's because we have the two surplus Corson properties. They bought, they bought the most amount of money.
Yes, the two properties out towards, out in Corson raised about right around $80,000 between the two of them. Those were the two highest-priced ones. And all five properties did sell.
Thank you.
Well, Bob will have a report next week.
Okay, good. Any other business to discuss? You're just taking over Kirsten's place?
I am.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I do not believe we have an exec session.
Let's flat out adjourn.
Yes.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.